Good, how you doing? Hi Deb, you wanna start? We'll start with the online folks to identify themselves.
Deb Tenway, town clerk, town bookkeeper.
David Barlow, town treasurer. Over.
Kathleen Aherne, school board member.
Martha Sylvester, resident.
David Yow.
Scott Breyer, select board.
Don Mark Cass, select board.
Ned Cole, town administrator.
Reed Manik, planning commissioner.
Chair Grant, Coventry resident.
Karen Keenan, Coventry resident.
Okay, I'd like to call the town of Coventry meeting to order on February 21st, 2022 at 6:03 PM. So do we have any changes or additions to the agenda I'd like to make?
I'd like to add an executive session after the current one, so it would be June 11th and 12th for personnel. Week 13, 3. It's August 3.
I had three things I got to. I have a comp time question for John. A question. I should be fine. I don't think any, I don't think any of these will require 150 Main Street property. And also I had an appointment question in the event of not reelected. That's no need to go into that.
Yeah, so let's have David's items to eat.
Okay.
T E N F.
Okay.
And do we need to, should we need to vote on your particular decision? With those additions added, do I have any public comment?
I have a public comment.
Go ahead Martha.
So because today is President's Day and it also falls in Black History Month, I'd like to quote our 16th president as I feel that this quote is still very relevant. The quote is, "A house divided against itself cannot stand." Abraham Lincoln.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any public comment? I'm seeing none. Number four, follow up to the agreement between the Coventry Village School and the Coventry Select Board on November 20, November 2nd, 2020. We're going to discuss the Edmund Douglas Price Endowment Fund. So I guess I believe we're gonna turn it over to David.
No, that's to me, Kathleen from the school board. Thank you for putting me on your agenda in November, and please tell me if you can hear me because I can barely hear you. But on November 2nd of 2020, the school board in the town came to an agreement on how we would access the Edmund Douglas Price funds. And as part of that agreement, we agreed to discuss three things at the beginning of each year. So I just want to, to do that as, as we agreed upon. So the first thing I'd like to discuss is the purchases from FY 2021. Thanks to the EDP or Edmund Douglas Price Fund, we were able to buy $5,652.38 worth of materials for the library. This is incredible. Our yearly budget is $1,700 and it has been that for many, many years. And it just doesn't go very far. So to be able to spend three times that much really had an impact. We still have a lot more areas that we can improve upon. But that was, that was the first thing, just to confirm how much was spent. The second point we agreed to discuss was the current value of the endowment. Since it is in stocks, Microsoft shares, obviously that changes each year. So I would like to get the value at the end of 2021 or at the end of January 2022 if possible.
Okay. Do you have any other questions?
Um, I do have three, two other points, but that's one of the things I'd, I'd like to get. I'd like for us to discuss so that we can be in agreement on it.
Do you have those numbers now or this?
Who apparently is in warm weather.
With very still water coming.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you, January 1st of 2022, the Edmund Douglas Price Fund opening value was $201,792 for the shares.
I'm sorry, can you say again slowly, 201,000 and?
$792. And it also had some accrued dividends that depending on the outcome of the vote on article, one of the articles in this year's town thing anyway, but the accrued dividends left $7,553.62 and 62 cents on January 1st. And of note, the, the spending from the EDP fund from last year came out of the accrued dividends. So we'd not sell any stock to meet that funding requirement.
Okay.
Over.
Thank you. So with that number in mind, I would like to move to the third point, which is to agree upon kind of a pre maximum amount to spend in FY 2022. Because I obviously don't want to touch the principal of this investment. I just want to touch the, the interest and that might not be the right, correct financial term, but you get my idea, right? That in most endowments, you just want to tap about 5%, 5 to 10% so that it can continue to grow.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we kinda, that you understand where I'm coming from. So with that in round numbers, say 10% of the 201,000 would be 20,000 and 5% would be 10,000. Well, based on last year's spending, and so in the first year in FY 21, we agreed to up to 10,000 certain procedures that would happen. Basically, we would purchase the books, submit it for reimbursement and the school would get reimbursed by the town. And that worked great this first year, and I propose we continue with that arrangement. But this year, based on the spending of the first year, based on the wish list of the guidance counselor, the wish list of the librarian, and a suggestion from Mr. Price himself about having the library open in the summer, I have come up with a round budget of about $9,000. So I would like for us to be in agreement that the school could ask for up to $9,000 in FY 22 and expect to be reimbursed.
Yes. I have no problem with it. I don't, because it's a.
David, is there any logistical issues with that?
No, I don't think so. I'm making, had made significant steps to sell the Microsoft shares and convert those over into a, a much more diversified mutual fund, all in accordance with the guidance from the donor of the, of the funds to begin with. And we're significantly down that path already. So I, I don't think that's gonna be a problem.
Why didn't the original donation, why was it set up this way through the town first? Did he just want more oversight over the monies? Did he want both sides?
No, back, back in 1999, education funding was done completely through the town. So it, it made sense for the times, 1999. It, it would have been the town and the school were one.
Would there ever be, would there ever be any benefit, David, to, or is it even possible to give this fund to the school to manage themselves?
No.
Well, that's I think it's probably possible, but I, I don't think we would want to do that without a really solid proposal about how they would execute that. And since we, we already hire a financial manager to do our investing for us, we've really got it in a solid place at the moment to keep it under response, I would say within the guidance of the, the donor's original guidance. That didn't quite make sense as a sentence, but he, Mr. Price and his wife gave very specific guidance. It was, it allowed a lot of latitude, but I think at the current point, we've kinda got it set up that it's pretty well functioning. No need to change that right off the bat.
I believe a few years ago, the fund only had around $100,000 in it. Is that correct?
It's well, it's complete, completely tied to the value of the 600 Microsoft shares that, that constitute the fund, plus the small amount of accrued dividends. So yes, the recent run up in price of Microsoft stock has really bumped up the, the number, but what goes up fast also comes down fast. The current value is significantly less. I haven't looked it up for today, but you'll see in my treasures report as of January 31st, that 201,792 was down to 186,588. And I believe it's fallen quite a bit since then. So it's tied because of the way he, he donated shares as a part of a tax. The way taxes are done in the States, so he got a significant tax write-off. And then we didn't follow through his guidance at the time, which was sell the shares and convert it into a diversified mutual fund.
Which is what you're doing now.
Which is what we're doing now.
And I could only speak for myself without checking with the school board first, but my opinion is Kathleen Aherne, private citizen who works very closely with the Coventry School Board. We have a lot of expertise. It's in education. I would, if it came to the school board, like you wanna take over this fund, I personally would. That's not our area of expertise. And everybody at that school already has a job. And, and I just can't see anybody dedicating the, the time or having the educational background to, to manage that fund in the best possible way to benefit Coventry's library, which was Mr. Price's original intention. So I know the town might wanna have one less thing to do. But, but y'all are in the current administration more capable of, of doing right by that fund than, than, in my opinion, the school is.
In addition, our financial or investment advisor is not charging us for this service either, so it's included with everything else we do.
Okay, so do we need a motion to?
Yeah, I think, but so.
I, I just, my fourth point would be that I would like to put it in writing as I did so that it can go into the EDP file, which Ned has a copy of, the administrator, the school has a copy of. And it's just agreeing as per that original agreement on the three things we've talked about and confirming that we would follow up in January or February of each year for the, the subsequent year. I don't know that there needs to be a motion. I, I just really want there to be an understanding of agreement so that school can that amount confidently and expect to be reimbursed. And, and that townspeople and Mr. Price, who we correspond with, you know, can be told what's being done with his, his money. And that if we spend up to 9,000, and if you want details of how I came up with that number, I can bore you out of your mind in excruciating detail of where that came from. But just if I can send you a, a letter like I did in November of 2020 to the things we agreed upon and say, see you next year.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. We got the letter from 2020 and it looks like might be two things that need to be the, the maximum amount, just be updated and then add on to the first paragraph of ability to have the, have someone paid to be in the library in the summer.
I'm sorry, Phil, I cannot hear you.
Do you have that on that microphone?
Yeah, I can hear it okay.
Bottom left.
Must be my crappy laptop that you're using.
What I was saying is it looks like just from what I can see, the same letter, just add in on the first paragraph about having a library open during the summer and then changing that maximum amount to 9,000 instead of 10,000.
Right, right. And that I'll check back with you in, like, I guess we didn't, yeah, it says in January of each year. I'd like to leave that open. January is a very busy month. Let's just say in the beginning of each calendar year, we will check with you or check in with you, update you on the current fiscal year. If you're good with that, that's how I'd word it.
I'll make a motion to accept that letter and have Scott sign it on behalf of, as the school board, there is a select board chair, once it comes in.
I think we have it, don't we?
We don't have nothing.
Okay. So move. All those in favor? I, thank you.
Thank you very much. See you next year.
Yeah. Moving on, approval of the 2022 Orleans Fire Service Agreement. I was confused in my email, so.
You have the, in your packet. The revised version, you go to page, the bottom of page, it's 23. It's been adjusted, the $16,643 that's spoken in this.
Is that what's in our budget?
Yes, actually there's 17,000 in the budget.
And they were going up to what, 18? So next, next year, he's gonna contact us before we finalize our budget. Because he rolled this back a little bit, so we're gonna probably
Grab a little bit more.
We're gonna be probably saying instead of eight, probably a 20,000. Probably gonna owe 4,000 bucks or 6,000 bucks.
I chatted with the Regie on the phone and he was thinking it was gonna be about 22.
I mean, is that, these kind of, there's nothing we can do about the price. The price is the price, is that correct?
Well, no, I didn't understand why we were arguing over a $2,000, $2,000 increase when it's based on a three-year rolling average and we're giving out, trying to give out 60% raises in the assessors office.
I don't think there was any argument about the increase. I think the argument was what we put in our budget.
Well, we're doing the same thing we did with CAI Services. We've already met, voted on budget numbers. John sent numbers that didn't correspond with that. Now he's readjusted them back.
So they will correspond.
So they will correspond. But why were we voting on numbers that we didn't know for sure? Just saying that the last one, that's the AI service. Should be done during budgets.
Agreed.
62,000.
For the town?
Yep.
For the cost total? An ambulance?
Nope, not an ambulance. I don't, I, I don't figure that one into the next figure separate anymore. We have to vote motion to accept this and have you sign it, right? This is for effective January 1st, what we probably ought to do is do get it changed. I think we did change the city to fiscal year instead of calendar year, right? I, I wouldn't do it for this, but I think that's what we gotta.
I'll speak to them about adjusting this fiscal year.
Cause that would help it out, I think, because you're going on calendar year on this, so it's not coming up until January anyways, which is two months after you do budget. You change it to fiscal year, then they're talking about it way before your budget time.
January is plenty of time to budget, bring the final ones to a war.
No, but we should have, we should have had that done before January.
Yeah.
But if it goes fiscal year, we'll be talking about this.
Right, but we'll have to fix it, so.
Right.
We'll be talking about before.
We'll be talking about in July.
July, August, and it'll be plenty of time done.
I wonder if we should do a six month or a half till, just let's maybe he could rechange now, cause that, that wouldn't work.
Standing up to reallocate funds within the budget after the start of the fiscal year.
Cause we'd have surplus.
Oh, we're already doing that.
Cause this is technically, we had a contract for calendar year that spread across two fiscal years.
Yes. But because we're paying them in one and it's paid as a lump sum, it's not go about in multiple fiscal years. It's paid out in one fiscal year.
But the contract doesn't match that.
Yeah, no, it is, yeah.
Right.
It should say.
It should match. We should, we should try to fix it to our fiscal year.
It worked well with the city because we were behind on the agreement, so we were able to fix it that way.
We could probably fix it per day. She divided the contract by 365 days and agreed to the amount for X amount of days and then we could then we could redo it.
It might not make that as big of a.
It might be easy, it might be easier to
What's that then?
Divide this contract by 365 days and get the daily amount. And then if we want to change it just to our fiscal year, we can agree on it for X amount of days and then we can adjust it.
So make it essentially 50% to be half the fiscal year, because July, January won't.
Yes, actually. But then we wouldn't be able to pay them the balance. So we would be actually behind. They'd be providing the service.
Well, it would come back up and.
It would come back up July sometime.
Cause we haven't, Deb? Um. We haven't put a checkout to Orleans for what year are we in now?
22. Fiscal 22.
Cause it would have been last year that we put a checkout to them, so that would have been.
I will have to check on that, so you don't remember offhand.
Behind, yeah, this, we're already behind.
We paid them last year in March.
To December, so we would, we would be paying from January 1st to June 30th. Yeah, half a year.
Which would be half of this. And then they can figure.
Redo a whole year then, and we can pay half of it and then pay the bigger half.
I don't know, I don't think you, no, because they would have been paid to December 31st, 21. And now this is covering, gonna, supposed to come out of next fall or after July 1st.
But we don't have enough money in our budget for, for that payment.
For right now, for right now.
I would just go with what you've been presented, then if John wants to, you guys wanna talk with John and readjust it, he's not worried about that.
I make a motion, we accept the Orleans Fire Department agreement between the town of Coventry for the amount of $16,643.55 for the terms of January 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2022.
So move.
All those in favor?
I, I.
We'll work on getting it straightened out. We just mentioned.
I was just scrambling through the check register to see, we, we last paid them that exact same amount last March 15th. March 15th, 2021, that exact amount you just said.
Yep, thank you. So we have yet to pay them. Well, they're only gonna be three months behind, then they're gonna be paid ahead for the rest of the year, nine months, so that's pretty equal. But if we did get it right, we could pay them after six months, so they'd be six months behind, but then six months ahead. Okay. Moving on to number six, request from 9E911 Corney to name the existing driveway at 380 Hermanville Road on parcel ID number OTH37001 to Coventry Falls Lane, a private road.
So this was brought up from, in an audit from the state that Jim Cobb has multiple buildings up there with dwellings. And when you get more and that they do have addresses, so the state is really, really putting a gavel down to having every building on a property have addresses. And he's got five buildings up there, and I think he said two of them have families in it. And when you get above three addresses on a driveway, they, you want to, they want to name it a road. So I spoke with Jim the other day and he since he's the only one there, he liked the idea of Coventry Falls Lane, which I thought was good. Now he did, I didn't get a chance to look. He said he thought that was a town highway of a class four on his driveway.
That's right. I don't, I was gonna bring that up, so I don't know if the previous board ever gave up the right of way through there.
Which is that we wanted to make a difference. We could still do that at some point, but.
I think you should look into what the previous board did. I'm not sure if they gave that up.
Cause it's not noted on the 911 site as a town highway?
We gave some roads up, but since I've been here, we haven't, I don't.
No, it came up quite a while. And I can't remember what the board's decision was at that time. Cause I think if you look up by its house, it turns to a trail right there.
Yeah, it's the four real trees.
Cause the actual town highway went to the bridge above there.
Had a listed town highways that.
And I'm not sure if that would make a difference. Does it matter if it's private or class?
Well, no, when it comes to naming your, the private doesn't mean anything, especially 911 goes. It's just wondering if the town's taking care of it or not. And we can just blow it right off and then go through your house. Are you plowing now?
No.
Last year you don't plow anymore.
Two years, so that would have been probably a luxurious timeframe. Luxure bread and on whether or not to give it up or illegally.
Well, what, what do you want that to be? And that would end up, that would end up being in records, right?
You would have had gone through the whole process.
Yeah.
I don't remember. There'll be the warning and all that stuff, so I'm not sure if we ever got legally thrown off.
Is it something that we should do or it makes no difference?
I would keep it because you got, you got a great resource down there in the falls. And then if you get that trail of those up through Royer's Land, does it should be, I've got a map.
I don't have an app.
I think you.
But it does, it, it starts to.
It's the town.
It's a roadway through there.
Yeah, you wanna throw it to a trail or something, I don't, but I would keep it right where.
Okay.
And if it did extend those up there, like it could be just extended that name. Coventry Falls Lane. It's just naming it though, it just needs to be named. So. That's the reason for that.
I'm working with that name you. Okay, do we need to vote on this? Yep. Say I make a motion to, well, to rename or naming of the current driveway at 380 Hermanville Road on parcel ID number OTH37001 to Coventry Falls Lane, private.
We have the projects, we don't know.
Yes, okay, just.
Would you wanna wait? Because you might wanna, that might actually be part of Hermanville Road.
Can't do an extension. It's too close.
As far as your naming.
So Hermanville Road.
How did you stature?
Naming of the current driveway at.
What Scott was just saying.
It's just a driveway at 380 Hermanville Road on parcel ID number to Coventry Falls Lane.
I'm just wondering if it's still part of.
So his address is 380 Hermanville in the 911 system, because it's not marked on any maps as being TH. I didn't look at the tax maps. I don't, I actually think I did. It didn't look like it was there.
I just didn't know.
No, that it won't begin. He asked about Hermanville extension and they won't go for that because it's too close to Hermanville. So confusion, that's why Newport changed Pleasant Street extension to Pleasant Street.
To rename, what would the difference, whether it's ours or theirs?
Yeah.
So again, I make a motion to name 380 Hermanville Road on parcel ID OTH37001 to Coventry Falls Lane. All those in favor? Mr. Barlow, the treasurer's report.
And I'm back, so I invite your attention to the treasurer's report that was included in the. Email and probably in your handout packets, if you're present at the meeting for January two thousand twenty-two. The big spending in January was the. For the rebuild of the meeting house. Steeple or tower, I guess we would call it now, and you can, you can see the results of that if you come into town and look at it. It's back up, uh, so that was the Buildings and Maintenance Fund, the seventy-four thousand that went towards that. Looking back up at the general fund account, uh, all kind of normal expenses for the month. The expenses do include the appropriations from the twenty twenty-one town meeting. That was probably the largest amount in total, around seventeen thousand. Other than that, it was all kind of small stuff, and for those of you that have the report and you wanna know what that number eighty-six thousand, nine hundred eighteen dollars, ninety-three cents consists of, you can. Go to the second page and that will give you the, all the checks. That we paid all these different vendors, and you can look and see how we're spending the money. Gives you a direct. A view of how that folds, unfolds there. A, another thing to point out, I've added at the bottom of the report, a graph that shows the value of the town investment account. Um, over time, um, every six months, starting from Janu- July first of two thousand eighteen. Where it was about six million, five hundred roughly, and, um. At the, the end of January thirty-first, twenty-two thousand twenty-two, uh, up to almost ten million, five hundred. And I think, um, I hope that adds some value, if it doesn't, I appreciate the feedback. Uh, I think it shows the general trend of that account as heading up. That, and you can look in there and see over time that yes, it has its ups and downs, but the general trend is up. And, um, up about four million, we have definitely not put four million dollars additional in there. There's mostly, that's just appreciation of the funds through the investment. Uh, and the markets. And I would say that this is kind of an experiment for the report, just to show that I'm open to some other suggestions and, uh. Thinking of other things myself that I might put down there that would be of value to the board and to the town.
I think that's nice, David, I think the only thing that might be beneficial for all of us to see is. From the, from the start time in seven, one of eighteen till current, every six months. You know, let's make a note of how much we've added or contributed our contributions to the fund, you know, I know we. Were proposed to put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this coming year, but. You know how, you know, since we started, how much have we contributed?
Okay, yeah, I can give you a running total of that amount, be helpful.
The contribution rather than just the total interest gain.
Not the interest, so, okay, since, not yet, just since we started, we put in one point five million dollars. And then the next one, next time, next report, it might still be one point five, but then after, if the town approves. Two hundred and fifty thousand or five hundred thousand, then we at least would see it.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, yeah, I can do that.
But that's helpful, thanks.
And with that, uh, if there's no other questions, I concludes my report.
Thank you, Dave. Other business, status of the town website.
We have a draft version up and running, I'm doing some edits to it, I'll be sending out to the select board. A very early draft, probably late on Friday afternoon. Just to see where we are, get some basic edits, but Phil and I met with the developer. The, uh, it went very well, website is pretty good, I made some initial suggestions that is integrated already. Uh, the one problem I'm having is the font, even for my eyes, it's hard to see, so we're having. Changing the font and I will coordinate with Phil to get that changed. It's also weak or biased too, it just is a little, it's a little thin and not, not quite big enough to really be seen easily.
It's not a device thing, it's a response thing.
I was wondering if that was, that is a different.
Yeah, just, we just.
I want it to be twelve instead of eight. I checked it out, it looks pretty good overall.
Oh, you have the link, I don't have to do it to you.
Now find web dot X Y Z or something. Yeah.
That's it for the website, thank you.
So the update on the Elijah Cleveland Meeting House?
Yes, uh, Jen will be back with his crew in early April, finish this one last beam that they needed to get up inside. It's, uh, I don't believe it's the beams that are there, he's gonna send this guys over as time and whether. Still, that's what last week was still closing around. Uh, my suggestion since you'll be back here in April, is that we purchase some white paint or whatever it's your favorite color. For the exposed bear wood that's up there, so when they're up there, somebody else or myself or somebody can go up there and. Get a coat of paint on the bear wood that's up there right now.
Question is going into warrants, are we paying him at different times to be paid, cause there's one year for.
We pay half already.
More than half.
Cause there's one year for twenty-four thousand, completion of woodwork and louvering various people, lovers are hinged and attached, is that part of the discussion of? What we had last week, last time with this.
Yes.
Is that above and beyond? The louvers that you were talking about last meeting were the louvers up in the steeple, not any louvers, other louvers on the building at all, just. Or shutters, you meant louvers of.
Shutters, and then he had some, some that are just the, like a shutter material over that he's chopped up. After I painted them, places them on side for.
Well, where, he wasn't, we, we didn't really hire him to do any louvers on the building itself, other than the steeple.
He has replaced a bunch, he had a pile of them in my, uh, actually I go on my.
And this is not above and beyond, it's still.
I guess that's where I was going with it.
I guess I didn't realize he was actually fixing louver louvers, or shutter shutter louvers.
Yeah, it's the green.
Yeah. I, I thought so, up top, but down below you have some green ones too.
Which should be up on the tower.
Up on the tower, yeah.
Yeah, so there's no.
All the ones on the tower, he was. And they're okay, he fixed the wood, you saw.
He actually found some more, uh, there was a bunch more shutters.
Downstairs. So before we cut him his last check in April, when he's finished, I'd like to have the board, let's take an hour and let's go over there and inspect. He's pretty proud of his work and it'd be nice for us to look, go up in there and show us, like, show us the beam, show you how, you know, how, how you fixed it.
And this twenty-four thousand was just a part of.
Yeah, just what we paid him a bunch of.
Just, cause the, the way it's worded here, it makes it think that's something completely separate, it's just completion woodwork.
Is he, is he looking for twenty-four thousand right now?
Yeah, we've got a check in warrants, yeah.
So that would bring us to a hundred, and he has one beam left in his total contract was one.
Twenty-four, something like that. Yeah.
Okay, meeting scheduled for the next two weeks.
The pre-town meeting in four meetings are Wednesday this week at five o'clock. Saturday morning, nine AM, and Monday next week. Because we have a big snowstorm, uh, or at least a forecast snowstorm Friday running into Saturday. We should probably have someone out of that David here for Saturday morning, if they could be here. The select board, we also, I would suggest after town meeting is March first. We should probably have the reorganization meeting, March second, the next day, assuming there's no runoff elections or other things that keep us from meeting on that day.
Yeah, our meeting will be on Tuesday instead of Monday.
No, we, we will Wednesday.
Wednesday.
And then we meet again the next Monday as the regular, as a regular meeting.
So it'd be Wednesday, what?
Second.
Second.
May, March second.
I'll just let you know that I will not be here on Saturday. If there's a meeting, I'm not gonna be here.
Where, the seventh?
On the seventh, yeah.
Yeah, if we have on the second, we won't.
I will still be high on roads, so.
Okay. So what's everybody's schedule, so if we don't all attend, eh, eh, attend these informational meetings, I know. You know, Wednesday at five and Monday works for me, Saturday morning is probably not the best for me. But I, I mean, I, it's, it is possible if need be, I. Saturday. Select board need to be here for that, is Matt moderating?
Kind of one of those things, we feel somebody should be.
Oh, I got it, just for presence. Right, just for, yeah, we don't really do.
I'm on Saturday.
It shouldn't be that big a deal, but I just wanted to make sure.
I might zoom in, work, I'll, I'll try to zoom in.
Right.
Alright, so.
Yeah, also just a quick note, the Monday, the twenty-eighth meeting, that's a week from tonight. Will be over at the school, uh, here, but they'll be using our Zoom equipment and our Zoom numbers.
Is that a school meeting or that's our meeting?
It's there, there, there's.
At the school, same time, what is it, six?
Cause their bond vote informational meeting starts at six.
Oh, that's the one, that's okay. So there's the town information, town and school board information at five, and then the bond vote at six, right?
Okay, so if we just go Monday, alright. Wednesday, I'll just zoom in.
Cause you're gonna be sitting there a while, I'm sure we're gonna blow through the.
A Wednesday, you planning on? Are you gonna be here?
Carrying it over there.
Okay, Wednesday's information meeting's gonna be over there too.
Oh, no, no, so you mean Wednesday, I will be here, yes, yes.
And the Zoom is, it's our Zoom. Alex, on you, David.
Oh, yeah.
You got, uh, other business to discuss, three things.
Okay, so, uh, John was wearing, get paid up some time, tell him. And down and, uh, went over the, uh, his hours with David the other day. But how do you wanna do that?
Like, tell me the whole, whole.
So generally, we just take, so we're plowing and we're busy, we go home, but it doesn't always work out where we can use up that time and stay up forty hours. So he's way up right now.
He'd like to get compensated for that time.
He would, he'd like a couple, I, I think he could really use his money right now.
So that would just be in the regular check, just the same hourly rate?
So there's the other, that is the other thing. Dave, could you weigh in on that, what, what are your thoughts, should it be time and a half or just going?
I think, look, reading the personnel policy, it should be time and a half. The, the problem with the personnel policy is it's unclear on whether it's, uh, paid reimbursement or time reimbursement, but I. I agree that I think we should just pay him. And not do comp time for, for John as a, just a basic employee. So that, just to be clear, we should pay him time and a half for his accrued overtime.
So if we're gonna go that direction. Would you wanna do that weekly?
I don't think it matters.
Well, you, it would be bi-weekly at, at, at the fastest, but I. I, I would like to, um, at least offer up a draft. Clarification to the personnel policy, so that we get it, so that it's executable. Um, currently, as it's written, it's just, it's not specific enough that we can, that I can execute it as a paid person.
Do exempt or non-exempt? I can never get those straight.
Clarification would be to stop using that language and just say, identify the positions, we only have three. It's just saying, say what they are and what applies to which one.
Difference between salary and not salary, right?
And he's a non-salary rate.
Yeah, he's technically.
You could even just say the assistant road person gets this and the, the.
Yeah, so.
Superintendent gets this and the town administrator gets that.
If that's considered non-exempt, I agree, it's, it's, to me, it's, uh, so in accordance to the town compensates all non-exempt employees at the rate of one and a half hours. For each hour actually worked in excess of forty. Exempters comp time. And this is, yeah.
Yeah, part of, my issue with the policy is it just says compensate, that doesn't really, it's not clear, what do you mean by that?
Right, how many hours are we talking, fifty hours?
Money or is it time?
So I think if he uses his time and a half, it was up to ninety-ish.
Ninety?
I read compensate as being paid out.
But we should.
Able to get forty hours.
Right, I, I know, but I'm just going.
Okay, so I.
So would you want him to sit down with Dave and go over the numbers, and then, but we could be agree to make the payment tonight?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't think we have to vote on it, cause it's in the policy.
Yeah, okay.
So do you want, uh, John to come see you Friday, David?
I, or if you just wanna provide me a written.
Okay.
Summary, that's, that's fine, as the supervisor, I'm happy with that, and the board says pay with money, then that's what I'll do.
Okay, we're okay with that.
Oh, wow, what's going on with all the missing appliances over one fifty Main Street?
John, Jim Cobb came in and said, you've told him to give me the key, cause you were gonna give him away. I know, some of them are over there, uh, dead Lucas.
That shouldn't be going on, it was thousands of dollars of appliances there, and they didn't have the right to be giving those away.
Verified first.
Wasn't, uh, their hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. I'd like to see him returned, if, uh, if they are gonna give them away, if the board wants to give away, why don't you, uh, let the town foundation weigh in? I'm sure there's other board members in the community could use.
So how did that happen?
He came in and said.
He asked me if I had a key, and I said I do, but you ain't getting it.
He came in and said, Dave said, you give my keys, we can get the appliances out of there.
I was never in the agreement.
Who's?
Jim, Jim stopped me in a diner one day, wanna know if we get to.
What's he have to do with the building, I guess, where's the connection? No, there's no connection there.
Why are, uh.
Right.
Where are appliances missing?
Okay, I was just curious, cause I've heard his name come up a couple of times with that building and I was curious.
Okay, yeah, we didn't give him permission to take those, I didn't, I didn't know anything about it. In the third thing on your list?
Oh, I was thinking like, uh, some net and me are both appointed, I know I spoke to Matt Maxwell today, he said he'd be very interested in the administrative job. Just in case I'm not around by the time.
Okay. Anything else?
I'm good.
Can I ask for clarification on that last item?
It can seem thing.
What's that?
Where that last thing came from?
I mean, where it come from. But now. But now.
Saying that you are having conversations about. Interested in the town. That's where I'm confused. Can you clarify what, what that was about?
Yeah, so I'm saying I might not be here as a select board member, but there's another person that might be interested in the job. And the point that is an appointed job and I wanted to make the board aware of that.
Of which job?
Of the town administrator job.
Okay.
Just as you guys appoint wherever you want for road commission.
As the yearly.
Clearly stated that too. But I just wanted the board aware of it, that there was other people interested in the position.
Okay. Thank you. Warrants. They were trying to ask the question that they had with the chain one. You guys, I didn't sign them yet, but yeah. I'll make a motion to sign the warrants as they, uh, hang on a second, actually. Have you mentioned, what did you put in here? So French line, line striking, we haven't paid them yet, right?
No.
Apparently. Well, it is what it is.
I know, I, I know.
He said he had the same trouble in Newport. He painted all the Main Street in Newport, and they don't have a line left. I still got enough I can see in the morning when I get my solid, that's my main thing.
Yeah, there's something put, added into there. Oh, thank you, sir, okay. What were you talking?
He did mention that he would freshen out in spring, I don't know what he meant by that.
But we should see what, um.
Well, we shouldn't have to be doing.
No, no.
All those roads are class two, the state is failing in their responsibility for the second year in a row, they haven't followed through on. But the only section would be like from the River Road up to the interstate bridge, I don't believe it's class two. For some reason it curls right there and goes right down, uh.
Well, I'll reach out, I'll reach out to him and see, I'm gonna tell him we're paying him because we're obviously paying him, but. It's disappointing, but it was like.
Washington's on the table, it needs a second.
For approving the warrants as they are. So move, all those in favor? Aye. Check them all. What did the one in shaping? Voided and then she read it, it must be. There's a separate one. Separate one for it. Yeah, I, okay.
Are we supposed to sound something on the, you know, coverage policy?
And they have to rewrite it, right? You have to rewrite it, but I already, that already signed. It's, um. We're all three of us, I guess all three of us. Yeah, why don't you put all of it on it?
Okay.
Okay, moving on, minutes from February seventh meeting. You come back.
My mind.
Yeah, you need to.
Uh, I have, I haven't been able to speak to him. From their message to us, it didn't seem like it was a huge amount of change.
Did our masks come? Yes, yeah, but they're just, they're the same, so they, the way they were wearing, I thought it would be ninety fives, but. It's just the cloth ones that we had the last time. Price is right. Yep.
Absolutely. Cause they sent us a lot. How much?
Four hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because actually it may, no, that could be about right, because there's fifty per box and we got quite a few boxes.
Yes, four hundred and fifty that I, that I put down in there. Hey, you have a question?
Yeah, on, uh, on Eve, the minutes of last time, the one that we, the radar speed son. We tabled it, what's our process for like bringing back up table discussions, or do we put that in other business or do we put a date? What's gonna trigger us talking about it again?
Hey.
I keep a list of pending stuff and as it comes up in discussion, I sort of put them back up there, but I also keep it just. You know, just sort of revolving.
Rolling list.
Yeah, rolling list of stuff that's out there.
That can't be done anything with, with the, because we were talking about using the shares.
Yeah.
Not gonna do anything until snow goes away, so.
Right, just wondering when we're gonna bring up that, like, yeah.
Any, do we get any?
We got three bits, they, yeah, we got bits, but they were all.
No, 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 I meant for, no, I meant for the cleaning.
We, we have one from.
Did you put a date on it?
Yes.
What's the date?
We, we wanted to give him two weeks. So we give him one, two weeks, Kelly's came in, she made some adjustments, we talked about it in there.
That's the only one so far.
Only one.
Okay.
Only key. Aside from wishing to reissue before we even issue. But all of the people who requested us to reissue. Got a copy, we mailed a copy and we emailed a copy, so they definitely, you know. Yeah, they got plenty of time.
Martha, go ahead.
Sorry, I forgot my hand was up.
Must be tired.
Okay, so back to the mask thing, because there's four hundred and fifty of them, can we donate like two hundred to the school? So they can do some kind of decorating or some kind of school spirit, something or another? I'm just thinking last time we were like giving them away out in the elections quite a few times, so.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking because of the cloth ones, though, the kids can reuse them, maybe there's some way we can. You know what I mean?
Yeah, they can be, the, the, yes, the, yes. If Deb, if Deb's fine with it, I'm fine with that. Yeah, but yeah, yeah. I see you get through town meeting and then.
Leave a box and give them out.
Whatever is left, but I'll check with the school. Yeah, and I'll check with the school too, because I believe, I thought they were supposed to be receiving some S from the.
I think they're part of that whole.
Yeah, circuit.
They probably got a, they probably got two thousand. More, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, I make a motion that we improve, uh, Monday, February seven, twenty twenty-two minutes. All those in favor? Number eleven. I make a motion that we go into an executive session, access, executive session in accordance with, uh, one VSA. Dash three one three, where premature journal public knowledge. Clearly place the public person or persons involved at a substantial disadvantage. Second. All those in favor? Me, you, David Gallup. Did he leave leave or what? I think he's coming back. I think he has to just step out, I don't know, Charmin, Ned. Yeah, because I don't know what all this is. Yep. Alright, we're good. Alright, thanks for. Doing it. And we dropped him into the, uh. Me and you will just leave. Yeah, then we dropped him into the waiting room. Go downstairs. So him and Martha were probably having an awesome conversation and, oh, no. Anybody there?
Dave Barlow, can you hear us?
Oh, there he is.
I can hear you.
Okay.
Alright, thanks, Marc.
So coming out of exit, executive session, uh, no decisions or actions are being made at this time. Um, and now we're going to go back into another executive session in accordance to one VSA. Slash three one three. Three subdivision three. Three subdivision three personnel matters and, um, it's gonna be myself and. And Phil, we'll leave you guys on, we'll leave, we'll leave the room and discuss this, um, if. David Gallup does show up, he'll be in. This won't take long. You guys are muted.
There we go.
Coming out of executive, executive session, uh, for personnel, um. No decisions or actions are gonna be taken at this time. Yeah, um, so we didn't bring this up in, uh, beginning, but we've got a card from Martha and. Mister and Mrs. Benny, I'm not gonna butcher the last name, Martha.
It's Montalvo, it's my parents, Rhonda and Benny Montalvo.
Your thoughtfulness during our time of sorrow is appreciated, we thank you for your blessings gratefully. Then. Thank you for the nice card. We're sorry for your loss. Yeah.
Thank you.
Is that it? I guess we're all set. Motion to adjourn. So move. All those in favor? Aye. Aye, thank you, everybody. Okay, so Wednesday, I need a reminder call so I can get on at five o'clock. I'm just gonna zoom in. You gotta zoom in. Was Matt coming here, do you know?
Uh, no, I don't believe he's coming here.
It's at five or six?
It's at five.
He does such a good job moderating a meeting. He said, go ahead and put him in for moderator. He's like a prevent. Vote him in for moderator, because he didn't put his thing in for. No, no, I mean for, like, he's on the ballot for this coming year to be moderator. He's not on the ballot? No. Why? Oh, wait, was he? Yeah. Maybe he is on the ballot. Actually, yeah. Yeah.
Either way, if you don't see his name.
And Pedro is, uh. Wants to be written in for two-year planning commission and, uh, first constable.
We actually have about a hundred votes in.
Really?
We got, uh, we got about twenty today.
I don't even know what the hell I did with mine. They're sitting on my calendar, on my counter, I'm planning to come down the day of anyways. I, I'm counting that night. I'm counting that night too.
Just a reminder to people, if they damage it or whatever, don't throw it away, bring it with you. That, if you come in that day, bring it with you, bring it with you, because we've had a couple of people spill coffee out of something like that. And Deb said, if you wanna vote now, we'll just drive off. It doesn't matter.
And if you bring in your wife's ballot, you have to hand it to someone, you can't put it in. Or drop it in the box out there, yeah. Drop your boat from them in there.